Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Township of Lacy Caucus Meeting, May 22, 2014. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Clause 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We have some special guests tonight. We have Cub Pack 55 sitting in the front row here. I'm gonna ask you gentlemen to come up to the front here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Just come on up here, guys. It's all yours.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item number one, annual Fork River Mountain cleanup. Mr. Jennings is not here tonight. Mr. Devaney, you're gonna speak on behalf of Fork River Mountain?
Do I have to stand in front? Or can I just stand over to the side? I hate public speaking.
You need the microphone.
You can walk with it if you can get that far.
No, I don't need that. Just not. Fork River Round C- Cleanup, Mr. Jennings asked me to read off the totals. This year, they collected eighteen tons of debris, eighteen tons of concrete for a total of thirty-six tons were accumulated this year. The grand total for twenty-one years, a staggering five hundred and ninety-nine tons have been removed out of the woods here in Lacy Township.
Fantastic.
Phenomenal feat. Now, there's a lot of organizations that are participating with the Fork River Mountain Group. The Cub Scout Pack and Police Scout troops have been asked to help every single year. Mr. Most has been out with us on numerous occasions. How long did we work, guys? How many, how long were we out there?
Two hours.
Five hours.
No, we weren't at the five hours. How long were you out there? A couple hours, right? What was the biggest thing you found?
Boats.
How many boats? Two boats. Now, Mr. Most said that we have the best, our public works, we have the landfill, it costs seventy dollars a ton to take it over to Manchester. Someone actually took the time to cut two boats up and put them in their vehicle, take them out in the woods, and discard them. One person was not so lucky, they left the ID tag on the boat and turned that in. So, we had the registration of the boat under the bulk of the boat. On behalf of Fork River Mountain Group, we just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to the committee for your support and allowing us to get out there and providing the dumpsters and the township employees who also were out. The gentleman who ran the backup, whose name escaped me, was absolutely wonderful. He did a great job. Thank you.
Mayor, you don't mind if I say something after you, do you?
Oh, no. No, go ahead. You go first.
Well, like Mr. Devaney said, you know, illegal dumping is a serious crime. We take it seriously. You know, the amount of fines and the vehicle could get confiscated if they're illegally dumping. So, it amazes me that we have one of the best state-of-the-art recycling center here in Ocean County, and it's very accessible. It's opened seven days a week, and also, the Manchester landfill, the tonnage to get rid of it is very low-cost to our residents. So, I live out in the Pine Lands. It's a pristine place, and I want to thank PAC 35 and all the organizations for cleaning the Pine Lands and keeping it pristine. And I would encourage everybody to stay vigilant, and when you see illegal dumping happening, you simply just call the police department. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a great service you guys provided to town, and she'll be very proud of your hard work.
And guys, I had a minute, a couple minutes to spend between the back room before the meeting tonight, and I also want to thank you. You know, I know PAC 35, I know how active you are in town, and this is just one of many, many undertakings that the PAC takes each year on behalf of the residents of this town. So, we truly appreciate it. We thank you, Mr. Devaney, all the volunteers, you know, from Fork River Coalition. You've been doing this for a lot of years, and it's certainly something that's very, very important. I happen to sit on the Finance Commission for the state of New Jersey, and believe me, you're talked about very frequently out there as well. So, the word's getting out that Lacy Township truly cares about the Pine Lands. So, thank you very much, and Dan the Man, I appreciate it, and it was great talking to you in the back tonight. Thanks, Dan. Okay, item number two, one-day social affairs permit, Lacy Oak Lodge, June 21st.
Because Lacy Oak Lodge is holding an event on June 21st, and they need authorization for money raised to help autistic children. They're having a bike run, and they need a one-day social affairs permit. I just need permission for myself and the chief to sign off on it.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Okay, I have one other item on the caucus head-on. I have a letter here. We, Lacy EMS just graduated eight additional volunteers that are gonna be dedicating their time to the squad, and I just want to read this little note and mention the individuals' names. And if you're here, maybe you could stand up and come up to the front. Before I read the names, is there anyone here from Lacy EMS?
Nope.
Okay, let me, it says, "This week is National EMS Week, which is from May 18th to May 24th. This year's theme is EMS Dedicated for Life. Lacy Township First Aid Squad 23 had eight new members attend the EMT School, January 7, 2014 through April 14, 2014. All eight EMT students successfully completed the program at the Ocean County First Aid Academy. All eight have passed their state exam, become certified EMTs. We want to congratulate the following members: Jessica Davidson, Danielle Fosbury, Jonathan Jergen, Sam Kearns, Lily Cuddy, Jennifer Localeo, Nicholas Pertel, and Troy Skellinger." These are people that are truly gonna do a very important job for the residents of Lacy Township. Most people here throughout the course of the year, we always have difficulty getting volunteers that we have available during the work portion of the day. So, getting eight new people trained and onboard is a major undertaking for the Lacy EMS squad, and I thank them for doing what they did. I thank these volunteers for volunteering their time, and I congratulate them and look forward to them serving residents of Lacy Township. Any add-ons?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, resolution 2014.
We don't need to have that this evening. We have no purpose to go into executive session.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the caucus? Adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we have no executives, so we're gonna jump right into our regular meeting tonight. I know you guys said you have to get out of here. Some are playing soccer or some, one of you said you're going home to go sleep early. Which one was that? Dan the Man. So, if you guys want to take a minute and, you know, go out the back door, you know, it was great having you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, he works at that. To my friends in the back there, scouts, you here for a merit badge tonight? You have to attend, you have to attend one of our meetings, or you love attending one of our meetings? Why don't the six of you come up, and I'll ask you to do the Pledge of Allegiance for the start of our next meeting. Is that okay? Then whoever thinks you didn't show can see on TV.
Come on, guys. Let's go earn your badge.
Which pack you badge with? 156? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Township of Lacy, May 22, 2014, meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Clause 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're gonna begin with a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. This morning, we have our gentleman here from PAC 156 in Lacy Township, and we're gonna ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Troop 156 is here tonight, earning a merit badge, so we're happy to have you, and we truly appreciate you participating in the meeting, guys. Okay, item number one, second meeting of ordinance, 2014, ten authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
In accordance with the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 48,4-45.14.
Can I have a motion? I'm sorry, it's the second meeting. Second meeting, I'll open up the floor for any public comment.
Do we have public comment just on this?
Just on this.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll have public comment at the very end for the public on overall general stuff. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion.
A motion on the ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes.
Item number two, second meeting of ordinance, 2014, 11, setting salaries for the crossing guards.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township." This is for the crossing guards for the years 2014, 15, and 16. It's a 2% increase in their hourly wage. They start at nine dollars an hour and go up to fifteen dollars an hour.
Again, being the second meeting, I'll open up the floor for any public comment.
Seeing none, motion to close.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes, item number three, second meeting of ordinance, 2014, 12, amending Chapter 335, zoning of the Township Code.
In accordance with the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled zoning, so as to amend Section 335-79 entitled zoning permits. This is with regards to changing some of the lowest floor elevations of the structures of the inhabitable area of the space, and it says garage enclosures and other areas intended for limited storage shall not be less than eight inches above the center line of the abutting street. These are various changes that are being made in accordance with recommendations from the planning board, and also, there are some fees and permit, fees being changed as well.
Again, being the second meeting, I'll open up the floor.
Seeing none?
Yes, sir.
And is that a name?
Step up to the microphone, name and address, please.
My name is Peter Mark, 844 Hammond Street, Oak Harbor, New Jersey. Does that in relevance to the damage sustained by sanding so that everybody's houses being raised can then come up higher than eight inches off of the existing street line? Because some of us have sustained greater than eight inches worth of water in our garages at the time where they had, at that time, set.
Yeah, it really, it does apply to sandy, but not a hundred percent. What happens is we have, our ordinance, the way it exists in town right now, is some of the houses that we've been trying to go out in sandy situations have to raise their floor and their garage elevation so steep when you have a lot that's fairly close to the street, that you have an extremely steep driveway going up.
So, I'm living that life.
Yeah, the underneath of the house cannot be used as a habitable area if you're in a sandy area where you have to raise it up above the, let's say, elevation.
Oh, it's on the, underneath the house?
It's for your garage floor.
Okay, the garage floor's gonna be concrete, so that's not gonna affect anything if I raise it by, I got about three or four feet.
Yeah, you can raise it as high as you want, but, you know, we're making it at a minimum eight inches, so that the houses are all gonna have the pitch from the garage floor to the street, but not create a hardship on somebody when they have such a short driveway that the elevation is so extreme going up. So, it's really just to bring it all into sequence, so that it's all the same across the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Motion to close the floor?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes.
Item number three, second meeting of ordinance, 2014, 12, oh, no, I did that one, right?
Yeah, we're on the first reading now.
Number four, first meeting of ordinance, 2014, 13, authorizing donation of block 2200, lots 39 and 40.
In accordance with the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of block 2200, lots 39 and 40 from the estate of David J. Hague in accordance with NJSA 48,12-5A1. This is a non-conforming lot west of the Parkway in the Pine Lands area that the estate is donating back to the township.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes. Item number five, resolution 2014, 137, authorizing responsibility of conducting the annual budget examination.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the Township of Lacy to assume the responsibility of conducting the annual budget examination.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes. Item number six, resolution 2014, 138, authorizing the budget to be read by title.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the reading of the budget by title only.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes.
Adrian, do you have anything to say before we?
Any comments on the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, this year, this year's budget is, calls for a two-and-a-half cent increase in the municipal tax rate. That means for the average home, which is valued at $310,000, a two-and-a-half cent increase will translate into $77.50 per year, or $6.46 per month. State lets us to make comparisons over a five-year period of budgets. Our budget in 2010 was $26,117,814. The current year budget in 2014 is $28,673,289, a difference of $2,555,475. That's an average increase per year of $510,000, or a 9.78% over five years, or 1.96% per year. One of the biggest items in our budget is our salaries. In 2010, our total salaries was $10,318,78. In 2014, it's $10,693,780. That's an increase of 6.6% over a five-year period, or 1.32% a year over that same five years. On the revenue side, we're showing a total of $1,200,000 lost in revenue, and the two items that account for that were, last year, we had a $400,000 revenue line item from FEMA, which we received. This year, we have only $50,000 from FEMA, a difference of $350,000. Last year, we had $736,000 as an item, a reserve to pay debt service. This year, it's only $84,000, or a difference of $652,000, for a total of $1,200,000. The levy cap, the state of New Jersey imposes a 2% levy cap on municipalities with certain exceptions. Our levy cap, we are $188,722 under our levy cap this year. On the appropriation side, we are $1,228,375 under our appropriation cap. If there's any comments from the committee, we can open it up to the public.
Yeah, at this time, we're gonna jump to number seven, public hearing, 2014 budget. If anyone would like to get up and ask any questions, this is your opportunity to do so. Just speak, step up to the microphone, name and address.
Seeing none, we'll close the public portion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Item number eight, resolution 2014, 139, authorizing adoption of the 2014 municipal budget.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of the 2014 budget for the Township of Lacy, and I'll just go over the numbers again. General appropriations for municipal purposes, $27,208,77.43. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $1,472,411.92. Total general appropriations is $28,673,289.35. Less anticipated revenues of $16,816,268.43. The amount to be raised by taxes for the support of the budget is $11,857,20.92. Have a motion on this resolution, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes.
Item number nine, resolution 2014, 140, authorizing the employment of seasonal laborers.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal laborers for the Department of Public Works. These are young, school-aged, high-school, or college-aged children that we hire for the summer to help us with the additional increases in the parks and the playgrounds. There will be six young men, and the money is funded through the Clean Communities Grant.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes. Item number 10, resolution 2014, 141, authorizing execution of a contract with the Crossing Guard Union.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a contract with the Lacy Township Crossing Guard Association. This is for 14, 15, and 16.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes. Item number 11, resolution 2014, 142, authorizing refund of a building permit fee.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of building permit fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. There is an over, overcharge in the amount of $15 for a building permit, and we're refunding on the $15.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes. Item number 12, resolution 2014, 143, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the release of deposit monies held for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Yes. Item number 13, resolution 2014, 144, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $4,156,656.80.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Merrick Quinn?
Item number 14, motion approved, township meeting minutes of May 8, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Item number 15, motion approved, caucus meeting minutes of May 8, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any add-ons?
No, sir.
Okay, just one comment before we get to committee comments. Mr. Curtella and Mr. Dykoff are not with us this evening because they had prior commitments, so they asked me to extend their apologies for not being here this evening. Committee comments, Mr. Kennis?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Casey Parker and the entire Department of Public Works for the hard work they did on the new facilities at Hebrew Park. It was a tremendous undertaking, and I think we sometimes forget how much physical labor goes into a project that size, so I'd just like to thank all the workers. And also, to acknowledge and thank all the department heads and the emergency personnel chiefs for all the hard work they did on the budget this year. And finally, I hope everyone noticed all the pink ribbons that have adorned the streetlights and poles around town to, for the Paint the Town Pink event that is raising awareness for breast cancer. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Dave?
Yes, good evening to all the residents in Lacy Township. I'd like to congratulate all the people that graduated for the, got the EMS cert for the Lacy First Aid Squad. I know they worked very hard, and, believe me, they, both First Aids, we have a lot, lot to be proud of in Lacy Township, the Lenoka and Lacy First Aid, and they get a lot of new members, and they mentor them through, and we should be very proud of all their efforts. I, I too would like to thank Casey Parker for supporting the MS Bike Event. He did a great job detouring us because we were milling up, we had some road construction around the second lake, and it went very well. I think they collected close to a million dollars towards MS, so we came through town, and as always, Casey's on top of his game, so we appreciate that. Also, I'd like to announce that we have Meet Your Neighbors for Oyster Creek Community Information Night, June 2nd, which 4:30 to 7:00. Speak with men and women who operate, maintain, and support the Oyster Creek Nuclear Generating Station. If you've ever been, it's very informative. They have a lot of mock-ups, and they have a lot of engineers, and if there's any questions to be asked for more information about that, if you'd like to call, you can call 609-971-2185, and that's from Exelon. Okay. We also have, don't forget about the prosecutors, that drug forum they're having at the Pine Belt Arena, May 27th, which is very important date. I encourage everybody to bring their families there. I think it'll be very informative. It discusses a lot of issues that are going on in our community, and some of the speakers that will be talking and presenting that night actually suffered a terrible loss, loved ones due to drug overdoses. So, you know, our police department is really leading the way. It's one of the chief's initiatives to try to combat the drugs that we have in this community. If you read the newspapers, it's throughout all communities, and it's, and it's one of our priorities as a committee here. I'd also like to talk about recreation. We, the mayor wrote a proclamation for Nick Giovanni. Nick does, if you remember Nick, he runs for Relay for Life around the track. He does wonderful work for us, volunteers his time. He's a great guy. And him and Adrian Costa, Dai Paola, they run a Free Fitness Wednesday, Pilates, and Boot Camp. If you're interested, you can go to the website. You'll see it's held at Gilly Park Pavilion on Wednesdays, 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th at 6:30 PM. It's free. I encourage you to go out there and get in shape. He does a great job. So, I just want to congratulate Nick and thank him for all his fine work. Moving on to another recreation announcement, please announce the Geo Coaching Workshop. And what that is, if you go on our website, on our township website, you could click Recreation, and our whole spring schedule's on there, and this is just one of the events that he holds. The instructor is Dan Tholen, and Geo Coaching is a real-world outdoor treasure hunting game using GPS-enabled devices. Participants navigate to a specific set of GPS coordinates and then attempt to find the container hidden in a location. Come out and learn what it's all about. Bring your smartphone to download the Geo Caching application, so you can understand and learn how GPS works. So, I encourage everybody to come out. Just like I said, click on our website. Also, another notification, badges for the lakes go on sale June 2nd behind our municipal building here in the trailer, so, you know, please come out and get your badges. It'll be a great season. And please, don't forget about the Memorial Day Parade that we have Monday, 10 o'clock, to honor our fallen soldiers and our current servicemen and women. And I want to thank all the organizations that are involved in that and that support our servicemen and women, and also Home Depot, they also gave us donated flags, and I guess, who puts our flags out in the community? Isn't that the, is that the?
Rotary Club.
Rotary.
Rotary does. That will be starting on Monday.
Right, and I want to thank them for that, and Casey really spruces up our bicentennial park for that. So, with that said, oh, and don't forget about the event. There is a truck dedication after the memorial service at the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company as well. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, I'm gonna start with police stats for this month. Police stats for the period from May 1, 2014 through May 21, 2014. Lacy Township Police Department handled 2,741 calls for service during the period of May 1 through May 21. We had 462 motor vehicle stops resulting in 128 summonses and 82 written warnings, 35 motor vehicle accidents, 107 first aid calls, 9 DWI arrests, 44 physical arrests, and seven drug arrests. The Lacy Township residents, Dan and Darla Dabell, worked the chief apparatus to bring the staff of the South Jersey AIDS Alliance to Lacy Township, to train parents who are struggling with a loved one who is addicted to heroin, to opiate pills or heroin, and the use of Narcan. The training was held during the evening hours on May 21st at the Recreation Building behind police headquarters. The Narcan provides the trained family members with an opportunity to assist a loved one should the addicted person relapse and overdose. The medical staff of the South Jersey AIDS Alliance trained the parents in attendance and supplied each family with a Narcan kit free of charge. All expenses related to the training were funded through the South Jersey AIDS Alliance. The Overdose Protection Act of 2013 includes a provision that permits a person who may be in a position to assist another individual during an overdose to receive this special training and obtain the heroin antidote, antidote medication. The South Jersey AIDS Alliance was gracious enough to offer and facilitate the training. Special thanks to Georgette Watson, Chief Operating Officer, Bette Richter, RN of the South Jersey AIDS Alliance, for their hard work and dedication to helping families in Lacy Township deal with heroin addiction. The police department is actively investigating multiple daytime burglaries of residences in town. Two additional burglaries have occurred over the past two weeks, one on Fleetwood Drive and the other on Clifton Avenue in the Barnigan Pine section of Fork River. The unknown actor or actors pried open a window to gain access to the unoccupied residences. The burglaries have generally occurred during the midday hours when the homes were unoccupied. Detective Brian Flynn is conducting the continuing investigation. Anyone with information regarding the burglaries is asked to call Detective Flynn at 693-6636, or submit an anonymous crime tip through the police department website at www.lacypd.org. With Memorial Day Weekend and the summer months approaching, residents are reminded that fireworks are illegal. The Lacy Township Police Department will be strictly enforcing the New Jersey state law prohibiting the possession and the use of fireworks. Just as, as I mentioned last month, the police department is on a very aggressive DWI campaign. the police department is, is on a very, uh, aggressive DWI campaign. Uh, we're starting this summer this weekend, so if you're gonna drink, do not drive because if, if you're picked up, you're gonna be charged with the DWI. It's gonna change your life drastically. So, uh, try and do the right thing and be very careful. Uh, it's not just your life, it's the other people on the road that you're, you're taking and affecting. I, just on, on what Dave said, I, I want to thank Veronica, Adrian, and Linda. Um, Adrian is our CFO and Linda works with him in the office. Um, budgets are always something that, that are very cumbersome to put together. Uh, it's very difficult because there's always a lot of wants and there's not always the money to be able to take and fulfill all the wants that we have. Uh, we, Agent, he, I gotta say, he's cheap as hell. He, he's very, very, uh, much of a penny pincher. You do a great job for us. Uh, he's, he doesn't live in Lacy Township, but he certainly does a tremendous job for us in Lacy Township and, and we certainly applaud you and thank you for your hard work. I know you and Veronica spend hours doing it and, uh, it comes to us when it's pretty much in a completed package, so, uh, we certainly appreciate it and, and it's something that we're happy to get, uh, move on and get behind us. Um, the committee member Most mentioned that, uh, last weekend was a, um, 85-mile bike ride, uh, which, where'd it start? Sandy Hooker, up in there?
Monmouth College.
Monmouth College. Um, it was to raise funds for, uh, MS and it's something that's taken place, uh, a number of years now. And I have to say, you know, I applaud Dave because, um, he has ridden in that race, uh, a number of years himself, uh, to raise money for a very, very important cause. Um, so Dave, we, we thank you. Um, I, I was sitting on a few of the roads waiting to see you come by, but then I, I figured, okay, you were probably one of the first three going by, so I really, you know, wasn't able to catch you. But it was amazing how many people came through. But Casey did tell me, uh, you went out and checked the course the morning of, uh, and with the work we had going on out at the Middle Lake, it was, you know, you, that brought it to our attention that there could be a problem with some of the riders over there being there, it's under construction. So, uh, not only is he, he raising money for a very important cause, but he's out there, you know, doing everything he can to make sure nobody gets hurt on our roadways here. So, we thank you very much for what you do, Dave.
Thank you, Mary.
Uh, Stephen touched on the, uh, Paint the Town Pink. Um, this is, if you drive up and down Lacy Road, we had, uh, volunteers that were putting up ribbons along the, uh, Lacy Road traffic lights or the telephone poles, I should say. We have some big signs out, out front. Uh, very, very important month, you know, bringing awareness to, um, breast cancer and it's, I know it's been all over the radio, 92.7, 100.1 has been doing a lot of coverage on it. Uh, it's not just Lacy Township, it's being responsible by Meridian Health and there's a lot of businesses involved, a lot of municipalities involved, and, and it's certainly something that, uh, if you just get a few more people to take and go B tested, it can certainly, you know, make a major change in somebody's life if you're, if you're in that situation where you're gonna be dealing with that down the road. So, uh, we, we thank Meridian and all volunteers that have stepped up to, um, do what they have to do along our, our township roads here in town. And, uh, don't forget, if you haven't done it, get out there and do it. Uh, next, next, um, weekend, we have our, our carry on, again, with cancer prevention. We have our Relay for Life coming up in, um, Berkeley Township. It's a, uh, Relay for Life that we do in conjunction with Berkeley Township. We kind of share it together and we utilize their park up at Veterans Park to, uh, have the walk itself. Uh, Mr. Bender's not here tonight, but, uh, there is a lot of information out there. We, we, you know, if you have any questions, you can go on the website and get the information, but it does start next Friday night. Uh, and if you're around, you want to still put a team together. I know there's still opportunities to put teams together, uh, and get out there and, and really raise money for another very, very important cause. So, uh, we have it every year and we're, we're very thankful to Berkeley Township for participating with us on it. This past Saturday, we had our, our ribbon cutting over at Hebrew Park on Saturday morning. Um, you know, certainly the park has been there for many, many years, but the governing body last year, uh, made a decision to take and, and go in there and do some major reconstruction of the park itself, uh, not only, you know, to make it a, a safer situation, but some of the equipment and, and facilities we had were kind of getting outdated. So, if you haven't gone over there and seen it, it truly is something worth going over and seeing. It's, uh, really, it's at the same caliber as Gilly Park at this point in time. It was always a little lag in behind, but, uh, we've got beautiful swing sets. Uh, a special thanks has to go out to the Rotary Club in town for donating forty thousand dollars to the governing body, uh, to be able to utilize to buy that, that swing set that we have over there. They did the same thing for us in Gilly Park and, and, uh, they're, they're always there for us. Anytime we go to them, they're always there to take and help us out and, uh, defer some of the costs that we run into in trying to do these things. Uh, Lacy Soccer Club also made a five thousand dollar donation. Uh, we redid some of the fields and again, they, you know, they weren't approached and asked, these people came to us. Uh, they're great organizations. They do a tremendous amount, whether it be fundraising or they're, they're doing a lot for our children, just like, you know, leaders of your troop are doing a lot for you gentlemen in the back there. So, uh, we thank them for all that they've done. But the park, it truly is a, a beautiful, uh, setting. Uh, it was, it was kind of special because, um, for those of you that, that don't know, Hebrew Park is named after Bill Hebrew, who was one of our, uh, early sports, uh, coaches here in town. Uh, Mr. Hebrew passed away back in 1978 very unexpectedly, and the governing body at that point in time chose to name the park after, uh, Mr. Hebrew. Um, you know, he, he was a baseball coach and he coached other sports throughout the town. And apparently from the people I've talked to, he had quite an impact on a lot of young men and women during his involvement in sports recreation. But it was nice because we, we had, uh, Bill's wife, Mrs. Hebrew, was there for the ribbon cutting. Uh, her whole family was there, grandchildren were there, and it really, you know, brought it all into perspective, you know, what, what was created many years ago because of somebody that, that really left an impact on the, um, town itself. And on a, another note, there was also, if you're a, um, parent of a child, any children in Lenoka Harbor School, and you go to the back of where the, um, swing sets are themselves along the fence line, there's also a little bench there that was donated by, uh, John Gallo of Atlantic Coast Welding that was put together, uh, you know, for, for Anna Kopack, who was one of our, uh, small children in Lenoka Harbor School that passed away two years ago from, uh, a childhood cancer. So, it's a, it's a very touching thing. Uh, we had two of Annie's little friends come up and, uh, speak in the microphone, talking about Anna and the impact that Anna had, uh, and Anna looking down, smiling on them Saturday at that park. So it was, it was very, very touching and it's certainly something that, uh, is worth seeing. She'll live on through, you know, that park itself, so. Uh, the Memorial Day Parade, uh, Dave touched on, uh, 10 o'clock, we're leaving, uh, the Methodist Church on, uh, Lacy Road on, on, uh, Monday morning. Uh, they're starting to line up on, on the parade, that Florida Parade at 9 o'clock down to the Methodist Church. If you're interested in watching, uh, that's great, come on out. Uh, if you don't want to march and, uh, you're gonna be around, it'd be great to see more and more people sitting along the parade route. Uh, like Dave said, it's, it's so important that we take and, and show the respect and, uh, give the people the time that have, have given their lives for us in this country and the individuals that are, are continuing to fight for the freedom that we all enjoy. Um, a lot of our vets are, are getting up there in years and, and it seems each year we lose a few more. Uh, we will be having a memorial service out here at, uh, bicentennial park right after the parade, so if you, if you're at the parade route and you can, uh, walk up, you know, the more, uh, we have, more folks we have there, I think the better it is because it, it really shows the support for, uh, people that certainly do deserve it. Uh, and lastly, I just want to, uh, announce that this is our last month for three months that we're gonna be having two meetings. We're going into our summer session, uh, starting June. We have one meeting a month starting, uh, in June, July, and August, and then we'll be back on two meetings a month. So, uh, if you come out for the second meeting a month, uh, you know, next, next month, uh, good luck getting in the back door. So, uh, having said that, I'll open, uh, Florida public comment. Yes, Regina? Just your name and address.
Regina DeSantis, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I just wanted to announce that there will be the 21st Annual Baywood's Yard Sales in Sunrise Beach. One of my neighbors came forward a couple of weeks ago and decided to organize it, and I understand there's gonna be over 20 yard sales this weekend, May 24th and May 25th. Come on out and shop.
And it's gonna be great weather. Thank you. Mr. Most?
Bill Moss, Mistake Drive, Port Little Beach. I'd just like to bring up my, you know, what I normally do on, uh, the, uh, township bills, which are, we've got over four million dollars. People should realize again, three million four hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred twenty dollars goes to your school system. So, you can see our township is running on a very small amount of that four million dollars. I'd also like to bring up on the budget, we're raising it by two and a half cents per every hundred dollars of a set value. And our school system is raising it 3.42 cents per a hundred dollars, on top of the seven cents that they raised it last year. You're also getting an increase, I believe, higher than this two and a half cents from the township, which again, shows that the township is taking the smallest increase. I'd like to remind the people that take a, uh, tax appeal, that whenever a tax appeal is done and the tax appeal is won, the person that has to absorb those lost taxes is the township, because the county always gets their full amount and, and the schools always get their full amount that they charge at the beginning of the year when the tax started. So any money that's absorbed has to be absorbed through the township, which goes out of the budget for the township, which is why you'll never see an increase as long as we have tax appeals. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Most. Okay. Just your name and address, please.
My name is Peter Hart, 844 Amber Street, Lenoka Harbor. I have a long agenda to get to, hope everybody has the time. I have some facts I want to get on record and I have some photographs if you have a disc player.
We don't, sir.
Or I have paperwork, if anyone wants to review it.
Yeah, we'll look at the photos, yeah.
Okay. Um, I guess it started about the fifth or so of the month. Code enforcement decided he was gonna send armed officers to my house to tell me that my trailer had to be moved. So, my house was hit by Sandy, so now everything that was in my garage at the time, um, is now in that trailer. Here's a picture of my front yard, a few hours after the water started going down. If you look closer on my garage door, you see the water line. Everything in that garage below that water line, lost. I foolishly only emptied the bottom drawers of my toolbox and figured, how high can the water get? It's never even been to the street. Four feet gone. Well, everything in that trailer was in that garage. I functioned out of that trailer in my rebuilding. And, you know, basically, I was told, trailer's gotta go, code says it can't be unhitched, um, in the town. And when it takes, it's gotta be moved every 48 hours, four feet. Well, that's what I'm gonna do. This is a 28-foot trailer without counting the notes. Right? Unfortunately, they're not in any kind of order because I just had them printed tonight on my way over. But, uh, you want me to just hand you, you can sort them and find what you like, and you can ask whatever pictures, information? But I think it was three times the cops came to my house to tell me about this trailer had to be done with it. And I told them, write me the ticket, I will deal with it in court. No judge is gonna convict me for leaving my trailer unhitched on a back road where there's no traffic. It takes you nowhere, no pass-through traffic while I recover from Sandy. The governor's been on TV saying, 10 years before full recovery. We're only in what, year, month 20, right? Well, I'm doing this all on my own. The insurance turned me down, insurance company paid for shingles and insulation. Nobody's paying for anything but me, out of pocket. I spent all my life savings. That trailer, I haven't had to buy after the fact to store my stuff for this, from this garage. All right? In front of my house, my tire was slashed. There's a picture in there of a tire with a little slash on it. In front of my house, hoodwombs slashed my tire. The code enforcement tells me to pay to put it somewhere. How convenient if township has a pay-per-parking lot. All the way across town, in the woods, behind a skate park. It's gonna be safe there like it's a safe in front of the house, right? Well, that doesn't go. I tried to speak with this gentleman the morning of Friday the 9th, and he told me flat out, pay to put it somewhere or I'm taking it. At that point, I made my way to the police station to try and, excuse me, I'm getting out of order here. I tried calling the court clerk and would that have been you, Mrs. Florrie? Are you the court clerk?
I'm not clerk, no, I'm not.
Uh, my apologies then. I thought I identified you by the website that says you're also the court clerk.
I'm the municipal clerk and there's a municipal court clerk, so I can see where the confusion is.
Okay, that's, that's why I drew my confusion, uh, my apologies. But I spoke to the court clerk and she informed me, you can't have a hearing, you should obey the code enforcement without having anything. I don't know where this court clerk gets off deciding what the judge is relevant to hearing or not, but in an American I know, I'm a United States Navy veteran. My father is a two-term Vietnam veteran. My grandfather fought in Germany in the United States Air Corps. We've given blood, sweat, and tears for this country. When I'm gonna see a judge to protect my rights, I think I'm entitled to that. I tried to see the chief of police at 4:00 PM that day. You know, the dispatch secretary told me, we've given you enough time to rebuild, sir, and some unknown officer standing behind her told me to step away, which I did, because you know where it led to? Silver handcuffs. It's all over the lead to, nothing good. This township has done nothing for me, not that I asked, to help me rebuild from Sandy, other than terrorize me over the last three weeks. Nothing. I've written to the governor, I've written to the attorney general, I've written to Congressman Todd Rungert, I've written to Senator Chris Connor, who I think you've received multiple phone calls from, Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I'm gonna get, as soon as you're done, I'll, I'll say a few words, yeah.
Absolutely. And, you know, it, it's, it's just nonsense that it's, it's, it's a 28-foot trailer with a three-foot tongue and a duly truck hooked up to it. I just put a brand-new driveway in, this thing takes out my whole driveway. I can't function out of it if it's tucked away into the woods. I rebuilt out this trailer. Every tool I got is in there. I can't use my driveway now because I'm, I'm blocking it off with my truck and my trailer, because if I go too far forward, I violate the code for how far you're allowed to be close to a corner, because I live on a little corner lot. My, my whole property could probably fit inside this room, just back. I can't back up because then you know what happened? Garbage man can't get my garbage out and block my neighbor's driveway. So my brand-new 50-foot driveway, useless. Or, I gotta park my trailer somewheres else and then I hope I don't need a tool I gotta run 45 minutes for. My truck held hostage because if I disconnect it to drive anywhere, I'm subject to having my stuff taken. At any minute, this willy-nilly code enforcement guy who's gonna take my stuff if I don't pay to put it somewhere, might call somebody and have it hooked up. The cops who came to my house saw no problem with it. When I begged them to write me tickets so I can go before a judge and I can be heard, decided, nothing wrong, we're not writing you any tickets. I, I don't know, I don't know what, what else, what else am I supposed to do? You know, I mean, this, this guy's out of control. Secretaries are telling me, you don't need to see a judge, obey. You've given enough time. I mean, are there pictures in there? All those rebuilding pictures over there? That's the island from yesterday. I was just over on the Barrier Island. In fact, I was there today. I didn't have to take pictures. I took them yesterday. Have those people had enough time to rebuild? Has everybody else, has anybody here been over to Barrier Island, seen any houses that have been wiped out? Still leaning on each other over there to this day?
Actually, I was there this afternoon because I'm working.
So was I, with my train, working, recovering. You know what? I work seven hours a week. I'm doing this out of pocket by myself, by myself. Some of the pictures are at night by headlight, planting bushes, taking down trees by headlight. Why? Because I don't get home until sometimes 7:00 o'clock at night. So, I have a little window of 7 till what? 9:59 before neighbors start complaining that there's trains and machines running. I gotta work until 9:59 and I clean up from 9:59 quietly until I'm done, whatever that may be. Sometimes 11, sometimes 12. Then I get up at 4:00 and go to work all over again. I don't make much money. I spent all my life savings. It's getting as far as I can go. I'm gonna back to my butt right now, as far as, you know, now I gotta, my house, it was built cooking. Somebody, I don't know who, somebody told me, you built my house. You were at my house in an efficient capacity at one time when I was suffering from flooding. I've got you on film.
Yeah, and let me just, uh, as, let me, let me say a few words.
Sure.
First of all, um, you made a comment about Senator Connors, uh, I'm much speaking with Senator Connors. Senator Connors was, received emails from you as well as the Governor Christie, a million people, different people. And Senator Connors forwarded me the email and also notified you that the Senator oversees state government, doesn't get involved in, in local, uh, issues throughout the township. And I, I placed a phone call to you last week. I spoke to you last week. Mr. Downing, who you're referring to, is our code enforcement officer. Mr. Downing was on vacation. I called you back. I said, when I have the opportunity to speak with all the individuals involved, I'll get back to you.
I was told Monday. You called me today.
No, no, sir, I, I know what I said, so you can, you can sit there and tell me whatever you want to say.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm not gonna argue, please.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you, so you don't interrupt me.
Yes, sir. I agree.
So I, I spoke to everybody involved. I've gone and spoken to the building department. I've spoken to the zoning officer. I spoke to the code enforcement officer. First of all, the code enforcement officer is doing what he has to enforce the ordinances that we have on our books in Lacy Township. We don't have an ordinance that says you can just unhook your trailer and leave it on a side of the road, because if we do, we're gonna have trails lined up all over the road. There're gonna be safety issues for us. Yours is a little bit more of a unique situation because of the situation that it, uh, happened because of Sandy. Okay, there's no doubt about it. There's, there's a lot of difference between yours and a trailer parked on a roadway by itself. Having said that, we still have an issue to deal with because you are in a corner lot, you are in a very small lot, and the fact is that when cars come around that corner, if the trailer's in a, a spot where a car doesn't see it, we're gonna have a problem. There's a lot more situations where it'll see the truck. I went out and I looked at your house. I drove out there and looked at your house, I believe it was yesterday. Um, and I have some concerns with that. Did, was, was a company I'm involved with build it? Yeah, back in the early 70s, it was built on pilings. And the reason it was built on pilings is because your lot is wetlands.
My wet, my lot is not wetlands.
Well, that's, my, my concern is I'm gonna have to have you bring something into the building department identifying this not wetlands, because your lot, when it was originally built, carries the water from over on the other side of Clamore to the north side to Drew, and the water flowed through that area in the back of your house. Now, I'm looking at the pictures you just provided me with tonight, and you're running fill after fill in there, raising the grade of your lot up. When you bought the house, there was no fill on that lot, I assume?
No, sir.
Yeah, you put the fill in there and, and by doing that, create a problem for all the neighbors furthest to the south.
No, sir.
That the water does, let me just explain to you. That the water will not continue to flow and ultimately make it over to Cedar Creek. So one thing we're gonna need downstairs in the building department is a letter from the state of New Jersey saying that your lot, the, the wetlands issue has been resolved and there's no longer wetlands on that property, because we do have a letter in the files saying that it is wetlands, and that's the reason the house was put on pilings to begin with. Because if it's, if it is wetlands, you're violating not only, you know, DEP, but you're violating the, the federal laws when it comes to federal wetland.
Can I interrupt just one second?
Sure, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Because the person that was so greatly praised a little while ago, Mr. Casey Parker?
Yeah.
I don't know how many loads of dirt he pumped in there, because right along, when you see the picture where the steel is, he filled in, he put a pipe that went from that sewer that I used to pump out when you did that thing, he put a pipe all the way to the back of my property and filled that all in with dirt. Mr. Casey Parker did it.
That's the easement that runs through from Clermont.
Oh, so they can put the dirt in my yard, but I can't put dirt in my yard. I have to be like, make it suffer.
Again.
And you're gonna try and beat me down with paperwork. I have paperwork from your zoning officer that says, I've looked into this, sir, and it appears that you're no longer wetlands. There's pictures of abandoned foundation across the street from my house that you can see that's been like this since way before the storm. And if you look closer and see some of the pictures, there's animals dying in water-filled ditches over there. That's not something that anybody's gonna bother about.
Why, why do you think the property hasn't been built?
I, it's built, it's a foundation!
Exactly. The foundation was put up prior to the people finding out that they had wetland issues.
Oh, sir, tell them to do your job and approve all this and let this guy build this house willy-nilly out of nowhere, or he just did it by himself.
Mr. Arp, you know, if you're gonna behave the way you're doing it.
I'm very deliberate right now because, because my, everything I own is in that trailer.
I understand.
And I've been told it's gonna be taken and I've been told to obey. I can't see a judge. I couldn't see the chief of police and I've been given enough time to rebuild. I can't get nobody to answer me until I call senators and congressmen, and then you wanna say, I'll call you back and then, whenever you call me back.
Guess what, Mr. Arp?
You didn't tell me about today. Why didn't you invite me to today?
These are public means, you can come to any meeting you want.
I understand, but you know there's an issue going on. Why didn't you say, Mr. Arp? You know what? We got things going on. Why would you not just say, how about you come tonight, let's get some of this stuff hashed out? We can work things out. We're citizens here. I'm an American citizen, you're an American citizen. I'm a veteran. You only work here part-time, right? What are you making here? What's that called in the house? What are you making here?
Let me explain something to you. For doing this job?
For doing that job.
$7,500.
Well, good for you.
Is that a lot of money?
No, that's not a lot of money, but no, I, I.
You assumed.
I did assume it was a little more now.
Yeah, no, let me just say something.
It makes slightly a little bit less to me, alright? And I bust my ass every day.
Mr. Arp, let me just say something. You called here yesterday and I have a full-time career, I have a full-time job outside of this job.
I got two full-time careers.
I understand that. The reality is, the girls told you on the phone yesterday that Mr. Quinn stops in, you know, the office during different times during the week.
Cops stop in my house periodically.
I come in when I have to come in to take care of stuff. I called you back today, the girls told you that I would call you back. I called you back after I had met with all the officials I had to speak with. And the bottom line is, you're, I understand what you're saying about being a Sandy victim, but you're living in the house. I mean, is that not the case? Because I, when I'm by the house, the lights are on.
But my garage is gone?
My question is.
I still suffered losses that I'm not allowed to rebuild. They're not even gonna try and beat me down with paperwork. Get this, get that, get the next thing. It's not wetlands.
Mr. Arp, I'm not gonna be able to satisfy you.
Apparently not.
But let me ask you this, was the garage there prior to Sandy or is that something?
No. How do you think it got a water line on it?
I don't know, there's so much stuff in your backyard, I don't know what was there, what's not.
How do you think that garage got a water line on it that said Sandy was here? Are you really gonna answer that question?
The garage was there is what you're saying.
The garage was existing long before Sandy.
Okay.
In fact, the concrete, since 2006, I survived it in the concrete.
And we're 21 months after Sandy and you still haven't started, for most part, you did your driveway, you put in some sunbrow ties, you did some landscaping, but you haven't.
I filled my whole front yard, I filled underneath my yard.
I understand that.
I took down three gigantic trees, I spent a lot, I spent about $15,000 out of pocket, my life savings. You know what my life savings is now? A goose egg, less than your yearly salary.
Let me explain something. I'm not arguing that factor with you. The fact is, I'm asking you, if it's 20 months, 21 months after Sandy occurred.
Yeah.
And the garage hasn't been built, and I spoke with zoning in your office yesterday afternoon. Zoning said that you've dropped off the permit recently, you just brought it in.
Last Friday, Dad spoke to the.
Okay, but 21 months after the storm occurred, you're finally bringing a permit into file. I also spoke with our code official, or our construction official downstairs. He said that you came in, spoke to him, and that he told you to go for the foundation itself only at this point in time.
That is what I applied for.
He's trying to take an expedited.
Not code, not the code guy.
I said, I said construction.
The building guy.
Exactly, construction official. He's trying to do everything he can to expedite the situation so you can get this garage up as soon as possible. The last thing we want to do is make your life difficult. But the other side of the coin is, we have a lot of residents that live down there that also want to continue with their existence because they have taken and put their houses back into shape so that the neighborhood is, for the most part, getting back in shape.
Okay.
So we're getting it from you on one side, we're getting it from residents on the other side. We have to find a happy medium.
So here's the happy medium. How about the paperwork I got from the federal government, those applications I had submitted as soon as they were available that says, you can do nothing to your property that you're gonna expect help for until we've approved you or denied you, and which I still have applications pending. So what do I do with that? Sticking to the federal government? Nah, don't worry about helping me none. I'm just gonna go, not worry about you telling me not to do anything.
Mr. Arp.
I'm just gonna get busy. That's what I'm doing now. I'm filing my applications because you know what? Because I don't wanna deal with these people no more. I'm ready to walk away from my house and leave this town. You've done nothing for me but terrorize me.
Mr. Arp, the federal government issue is really something that, you're not alone on that, we've got a lot of residents.
Okay, so what do I do? Do I disobey the federal government and get my applications thrown in the trash because I've gone ahead without their go-ahead, without their say-so, without their approval? Because code enforcement doesn't want my trailer in the street? Or do I wait for them and here you go, it's 21 months later, you've done nothing?
Mr. Arp, you know, the reality is, code enforcement is doing its job. There's no doubt about it.
What's your job?
What's my job? I'm sitting here, I oversee.
You're sitting there. Are you the top guy in town? Do you tell code enforcement what to do? Do you set the rules here? Do you help establish the rules here?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well then, is there no leniency for Sandy victims when the federal government tells them that you can't do anything until we've told you to do something?
You want to bring me a letter from federal government saying that?
I don't ever bring you a letter. It's all over. Call the governor, call your boss, find out.
Sir, sir, sir.
Man, man, man.
Don't be disrespectful because you're gonna take and.
There's decorum that's required here. Well then, start showing me some respect. I've been terrorized in this town. Cops have come to my house because code enforcement sent them, and they refuse to do anything because they see nothing wrong. And they said, we're gonna stay back as much as we can. I'm sure it's gonna be all over me now.